Welcome to this afternoon's work session. First order of business would be to inquire as to whether or not any of the board members have any questions on the preliminary items for the next BLC meeting.
Well, yes, I do.
Commissioner Amber.
There is a request, I guess, from police regarding the speed zone money that's been collected to use it for flock cameras, you know, the camera that has been set up at the elementary school. There's a request, I'm not sure what number it is, on the regular agenda, but it's on the consent agenda.
Well, there is no agenda set as of yet.
Okay, well, I mean, it's listed on the preliminary, which is fine, but if not at the next meeting, maybe at a work session, if they could go through and let us know the advantages or disadvantages, or is that really working, and if it is, about how much has been collected, and do you all know that?
About $300,000.
Over what period of time?
I think it's year-to-date. We just recently got a one-time payment to kind of catch us up, and so I'm not sure what that equates to in monthly revenue. I'll go back and look at that period of time.
So, when did it officially start?
It has started.
I know, I know, it's supposed to have gotten tickets.
It's been about a year.
Yeah, somewhere in that vicinity. It was kind of vague during, when schools were shut down, so we can't really know what the actual revenue will be, because it was covered a period when schools weren't in session and buses weren't moving to the extent that they are now.
I know, but when did you say it started?
For the red lights at the actual, you're talking about the school zones?
I'm just talking about school zones, which is only one school.
That happened about a year or so ago. Number one at, now, I was about to say at Mount Zion, but that's just the flashing lights.
Oh, no.
That's just red lights, there wasn't a camera on that.
We only have one, that's at Swent.
Correct, yes, that's on 138.
The racetrack.
138, yes. And right now, that money that's collected goes where?
We have it separated right now, because we're looking to see what the legal ramifications are, so we know where to put it. If it is indeed to go toward public safety items, we will put it in the police budget, create a revenue account, and then you could fund any capital purchases you would like out of.
Right, the request is for it to go to the flock cameras, and I just wonder, what are the flock cameras? Are those the ones that are just set up all around the county, or?
I don't know, I've never heard that term.
I haven't heard it quite that way either.
You said flock?
That's what's in the agenda.
I almost don't see that.
Maybe Chief will be here, if not the next meeting, maybe the next work session.
COO? Okay, well, obviously, it's not on this work session, but we'll definitely make sure that we get an address.
No, 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 you asked about the preliminary.
Yeah.
You asked about the preliminary agenda.
Right, but I don't even see it on here.
It's on the preliminary agenda.
Okay, well, nobody here can speak to it.
It's number four.
It's number four?
It's number four.
Yeah.
Press, let's use phone, school zone, speech there.
Maybe at another work session, if somebody can just tell us what the flock cameras are and the locations. I'm assuming they're just those regular cameras that are set up all around.
Just more of the same, I think, is what it seems like it is, and in my conversations, that's kind of what they looked at as a funding source to prevent, to fund it throughout the county.
Right, they want to put more, yes, which I think is a good idea, I just didn't know what flock cameras were.
Yeah, I still don't know what they are.
Right.
Well, I think the COO wanted to get a sense on that, but he can come back and report back in a second, other, any other items while we're waiting on that.
There is one we can remove from here, it's number 10 on this list.
Well, we're not looking to remove it.
Well, I'm just saying, this item has already been taken care of.
Number 10?
Yes.
You know there was more than one appointment needed to be made?
No, they're talking about, speaking with the specific one dealing with Latane McGricks.
No, okay, that's not number 10, that would be number 11. Okay, duly noted. Any others? All right, we hear no others, let's go ahead into our discussion items. Our first item is monthly financial report, Mr. Dennis Johnson, hold on a second, Dennis, yes?
Yes, Chairman and Vice Chair, so flock cameras are stationary cameras, they're utilized to use them as tag readers in trying to figure out individuals that might be wanted for a multitude of reasons, so I did talk to Chief and.
So they're tag readers, they're not for speed detection?
That is correct.
I think they have that on here, a speed detection device.
Right, but my question is, well, what are the flock cameras, right, okay, and I think that's a good idea, the suggestion to use the money from the speed zone, which is only one, which is Swent Elementary that I know of.
Yes, ma'am.
To use that to put more of those cameras out.
Got it, got it, okay.
All right, let's proceed on, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. COO.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm going to be brief in going through the latest update of the monthly financials. First here, I have all the revenues listed and the percentage of the amended budget that we have collected to date. If you look first, property taxes, we're at 92%. We anticipate meeting the budget, if not exceeding it, because we have one large item that's due to come in that comes from the state, and that is public utility taxes. We have not collected those, and those are typically nine to 10 million every year, so we do anticipate meeting the budget in the property tax area for fiscal year '22. The other item is, we've collected 78% of other taxes and assessments, that is a category that includes the lost revenue, and we anticipate another $15.5 million if we're close to what our average monthly amount is, and so we anticipate that other taxes and assessments to reach the budgeted level as well, if not, go over. Licenses and permits, right now, we're in the middle of the collection of business licenses, we're starting to see that activity move forward, and so it's later in the year, and we expect to see several more million dollars added to that particular category, even though it looks like we've only collected about half of the revenues there. With that coming in due April 1st, I believe, and then also, the activity for building permits, again, as we get into the heavier building season, you're going to see significantly more permitting and things, it always picks up in the springtime and the summer, so we anticipate that one being close but meeting the budget amount. The intergovernmental revenue, we do see some softening in that area, as some of the funds that we get for maybe prisons and sheriffs and other things have decreased just due to the pandemic. Charges for services, again, it's on track, and we do anticipate that coming in much stronger as we open the new water park, and we'll start to see those recreation programs and the fees for all the outdoor parks and activities pick up throughout the summer months. Fines and forfeitures, that continues to drop steadily as courts are backed up, and the fines have just continued to drop over the past several years in that category, so I don't anticipate that even reaching the budget that was reduced when we planned the budget. Contributions are on target, interest and dividend income, I think, you know, in the future, we can count on getting some additional money added to splosh in some of our proceeds, but right now, interest rates are the barest minimum you could possibly get, but we'll see those starting to go upward as well. In the other revenue category, again, that should be on target, and we don't anticipate that, you know, we collect a specific amount typically over the course of every month at almost every department. The last item, other financing sources, generally, there's very limited, that's where we categorize the use of fund balance, and there is no actual for fund balance, so there's not an actual charge for fund, it's a budgetary account only, and so what happens is, if you're actually using fund balance, your revenues are less than your expenditures, and that means you've had to consume money out of your retained earnings or net assets, and so while we've budgeted that, that doesn't always mean that's the case.
Can you give me an example of that on the financing sources?
Yeah, under financing sources, let's say, for the year, you know, revenues and expenditures have to equal, but if we use a million dollars out of fund balance, in other words, we're pulling that out of savings because we don't anticipate that, by the end of the year, you will collect one million dollars less of revenue than expense, meaning you're having to go into your retained, your cash reserve in order to fund that. That's what we mean by the actual use of fund balance, you don't actually make an entry to do anything with it, it is strictly a budgetary account. As you can see here, we're on target for the property taxes and most of the revenues here, you know, not all the revenues are collected equally during the month, so there's very many that come in early, and then some that are steady, like the sales taxes, and then we get some rather large amounts that are given to us for both insurance premium and public utility taxes as well, and TAVT is one of those we get every month as well. So you can see the revenues here, and we seem to be on target for revenues right now. You can see the property taxes, we've exceeded the budgetary amount in property, in that category right now, and then again, in personal property taxes, that category, we're very close to what the budget calculated based on the digest. So here we are, we're going back to look at the three-year history of non-residential versus residential property taxes, so in the digest that we did, for the budget, for the '21, which is for this year's digest, 56% of the revenues were non-residential, and then you see that trend has continued over the past three years. It doesn't mean we'll collect those that way, because as property taxes all come in at one time, there are certain types of taxes, like I mentioned, public utility taxes, insurance premium taxes, things that come in, they come in in large lump sums later at different times of the year, so you can see that about 55, 56% of the revenues that we collect are from non-residential property taxes. And again, sales taxes, as we have looked at, the trend continues to be strong, we continue to average about $3.1 to $3.2 million a month, and so we anticipate that coming in continually, we don't see any softening of that at this point in time, but we'll keep our eye out with the inflation. Again, the inflation increases the value of the goods we buy, and as a result, it inflates the taxes as well, the sales tax that we receive on it, because your merchandise now costs more. Again, looking at expenses, while we've collected a good portion of the overall revenues, we're very linear on the expenses, in other words, we're incurring a similar amount every month, with the exception of those months where we have three pay periods, which was December, and we'll have a three-pay-period month in June, so if you look at it, you see that we're in the 60% range, but we're almost 70 to 75% of the way through the fiscal year, so we're under budget right now in terms of the salaries, and, you know, we're going to try to get our arms around what we think the vacancies are to date, because we think they're rather high, and we think that's contributing to a lower salary and benefit number that is below budget at this time. And you can see the debt service we paid, we have very low debt service and capital expenditures, and we're on target for all the other categories at this time, so hopefully we will finish the year under in our expenditures for this year, and that will allow us to continue to have a good, strong financial position at the end of the year. And again, you look at the various categories, blue being the budget and the orange being kind of where we are right now, it's nice to have your salary expenses year-to-date, you know, kind of below and not trending to the total amount at this point in time. So, when you take the numbers that we have right now, we started the year with $102 million in fund balance, and we have $190 million in revenue, which is about 84%, almost 85% of the revenues, and 61% at $144,000, that would give us a surplus of $45 million or a current fund balance of $148 million. Obviously, we don't intend to collect that, because the greatest part of the revenues from property taxes, the vast, vast, vast majority of that has already been received, so we'll continue to incur salary expenses throughout the year, I think we have one, about 10 more pay periods, so it's going to continue to add up quite a bit, and so we anticipate that to really probably not have much of a change in our fund balance at this point in time. And there's questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Johnson?
I thought this was regarding our fiscal year, not the calendar year.
This is the fiscal year.
Okay, well, you mentioned how many more pay periods.
For the rest of the fiscal year, I'm sorry, for the rest of the fiscal year.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, we have three in June, two in May, two in April, and one more in March, 10 pay periods, 10 more paychecks.
Okay, on your information regarding the property taxes, is anything allotted for people that have appealed? Do we get any kind of estimation, or?
It typically rolls over into the next year, what'll happen is, you collect about 85% of the, I think, the due amount, and then if they're appealed, the value is lowered, and you see that sustain itself going forward. We don't get a final digest after all the appeals, it's kind of a rolling, so we will collect in some cases less, depending on the level of appeals, and I've, after we get a new digest next week, I will reach out to our tax assessor and just see what they've seen in terms of appeals and give you an overall feel for the next financial report.
Okay, that would be good. I have one other question, and it may be more for the COO, when you mentioned salaries, and I know we were going to reach out to the department heads for people that have part-time workers, did we ever get a count of that?
So Commissioner, I think how we're addressing that is through the budget submittal that the chairman and CFO and the deputy CFO will review, is looking at making an uptick on the minimum wage component for those part-time employees, and so what we're trying to do is trying to encapsulate all the part-time salaries in one, and we'll review it and make a recommendation to this board about those part-time salaries.
Okay, I know, I've gotten a couple of questions regarding that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, is the tax commissioner, is he here? I kept trying to look around. Yeah, I'm sure, I can't see, but he was supposed to come, he said that he would be here today, because of course, it's the question I ask all the time, which is the breakdown of our taxes versus, our taxes of commercial versus residential, and wanted to make sure that we had those collection numbers.
Okay, so as we go, as I mentioned in.
He had some, hold on one second, I'm sorry, let me cut you off, he had some addendum information to this, so that's why.
Yeah, and we're working with them closely on kind of trying to reconcile why we see some numbers, like, for instance, when we do our digest, it's just the county, but when they collect a dollar, it's both the school and the county, so there's some math that they're trying to work with us on to get us a better, clear, easier answer, so we can provide that information every month.
I was hoping he was going to be here tonight to provide us some of that, so obviously, y'all still working through that.
Gotcha.
The other thing is, I think we need to, and I've already had conversations with Mr. Njiki, we need to look into that service that we're using for permitting and licensing in that process. One, the first thing is, a lot of times, it comes before, is people are getting overcharged through the system, twice and so forth, it's taken folks a long time to even get their licenses and get them moved over, so I think that there's an opportunity for us to really do a deeper dive and evaluation, Mr. Njiki and I have been having this conversation, even if it's dealing with policy changes, we're really missing out on opportunities there that we need to look into.
I think it might be, is it on today's agenda?
He's fine, he's just aware of it, but those numbers are not, need to be ironed out as well as these numbers need to be ironed out, so I guess what point is too, is that we need to go back to the source, you all are doing, you are doing a good job of presenting this information, but as the tax commissioner alluded to, the county is missing out on opportunity, if we don't go back to where these sources are really coming from, shoring up the numbers, and the numbers are on paper, but if there are discrepancies in some of it, it helps us to be a little bit more sured up by running audits, but I thank you for your presentation, this is great information as we move forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you for your presentation, sir. Yeah, he's going to be talking about it, item four. All right, next up is MARTA and their first quarter jurisdictional briefing.
Thank you, Chairman Turner, and good evening, everyone, Vice Chair and esteemed Commissioners, my name is Colleen Greenwood, the interim General Manager and CEO for MARTA. I'm joined online by our Chair Rita Scott, as well as board members, Roberta Abdul Salam and Catherine Powers. Also in the room supporting me are Manjit Ranu, our Chief Capital Officer, and Colleen Karenin of Government Affairs. I just wanted to say that I'm quite happy to report to you this evening, that since we last updated you in December, we've made a lot of progress in terms of the Clayton County expansion projects. We're receiving unprecedented levels of federal support, and Chairman Turner reported in his State of Clayton speech on, or recently, that the Clayton ONM facility specifically has now received a total of $33 million of federal support. This region hasn't had that level of federal investment for a transit project since the city of Atlanta received $47 million for the streetcar in 2010, so it's been a long time, we are confident that we will have the support to deliver the Clayton program. In terms of our fixed agenda for this evening, it's just a brief operational update and then getting into the MARTA 2040 Capital Expansion Program. In terms of the ridership, workforce, and financial chart, you can see it over here, basically, we're experiencing a workforce shortage of about 180 bus operators, but recruitment efforts have been robust, and that result is now that we have about 250 in the pipeline to be vetted, so, you know, if that is successful, we will quickly close the gap on that shortfall. Our FY '22 sales tax revenues are stronger than budgeted, as Georgia continues to spend its way through the pandemic, and our expenses are lower, primarily because of the staff shortages that I just talked about. We're drawing down on COVID relief funds as quickly as possible, and the surplus that will result there will help fill the hole that we're still projecting for FY '24 and '25. We will give you a full briefing on the proposed MARTA FY '23 budget in the next quarter. And of course, ridership, it was on a slow incline, really, over 2021 towards the end of the year, it took a seasonal dip exacerbated by the Omicron variant, and is rising again through the end of February. Really, it's still early to tell where ridership will land in the new normal. Currently, buses at about 53% of its pre-COVID ridership, rail 45%, streetcar 50%, and mobility 57%, and there are many factors that are forcing that down, there are fewer employees in the workforce writ large, there are a lot of people working from home, time will build confidence in the system again, but we are encouraged by the spike in ridership during special events, so, you know, people are coming back to the system. We're also putting upward pressure with initiatives such as our bus network redesign, our stations transformation, bringing on new vehicles, and new service products like Automatic Fair Collection 2.0 and the MARTA REACH Program. The MARTA REACH Program is a pilot program, if you haven't heard yet, but it's a REACH Pilot Program, it's a six-month pilot study, started it earlier this month to help us understand how the service might better serve or address first mile, last mile connections to the system. There are three pilot zones, including the Gillum Logistics Center, success metrics will include level of service adoption, customer feedback, convenience, and fiscal sustainability. I want to thank Chairman Turner, Commissioner Anderson, and Mayor Butler of Forest Park for their help with getting the word out to their constituents. It is the Gillum Logistics Area, it's a very important industrial area with transfer points for the Route 55, the 193, 194, and 195. I'd like to start with the shelters and amenities update in terms of the second part of our presentation, you know, we always consider the progress of our bus shelters and amenities program as a demonstration.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Every point that you go to, I'm writing it down, I was like, he must be reading my mind, because I'm about to ask this question.
Oh, good, yeah. Well, we think this demonstrates our delivery, the delivery of our promises on an ongoing basis, and to the improvement of customer experience for our bus patrons in Clayton County, so there you can see that we will have received 30 amenities in FY '22, by the end of '22, we will have received at least 68 amenities in all in Clayton. And in terms of those amenities, this is an, whoops, this is an example of, you know, the before and after, you know, to a bus patron, this is a sign of relief, whether it's from the driving rain, or the scorching sun, or just tired legs, it's a big deal to have this kind of implementation along the line, and, you know, clearly, 27 weekday boardings, we're en route system-wide to 1,000 amenities over the next balance of the year. A little bit about the Justice Center Transit Hub, I'm not sure if I can, if I can play it. Thank you, while it's setting up, Charles here will, on the video, will explain what's going on at the transit hub.
Hi, I'm Charles, and I'm the bus stop transit assistant planner for MARTA. Today, we're at the Bay County Justice Center, and here, basically, all our customers in the southern part of Clayton County connect to the system. This area used to be simple bus stop, just a MARTA pole and a sign, and today, as you can see, we have done this quick build to provide a better environment for our customers, better transit experience for our customers to be able to transfer, and also provide seating and covering with our bus shelters. So this is our first transit hub in the MARTA system, one of many, and we did a quick build in order to fast-track the service that we're providing now, and this quick build is going to be followed by permanent comprehensive build in the future. As you can see today, we have added a breeze vending machine, this is the first breeze vending machine outside our stations and streetcar platforms. We're investing in Clayton County, so MARTA has several thousand of bus stops, and me and my team are working hard to install several hundreds of bus shelters and amenities every year. This is one of many new shelters that we're installing in Clayton County, and a lot of times, we have to add a concrete pad, make sure.
It may not continue, but what Charles continues to say is, you know, we have the concrete pad, there's a lot that goes into it, incrementally, the build comes through, and if I can paraphrase, he's very proud of the work he does as one of the MARTA heroes, because he understands the value of what he does to folks in the community, so I would go on to the next slide, which really talks about the Transit Center Hub itself, and an update to say, basically, what Charles had said at one point, that the breeze vending machines are now installed, and we are advancing in Phase 2 of this hub. Stakeholder engagement is a key part of this, we've confirmed amenities such as the covered waiting area, real-time info, improved lighting, and we are also evaluating some of the features desired by the public, including restrooms, community area, and some MARTA police presence, so that project is moving along. Here's just a, in terms of the operations and maintenance facility, did I skip one? Yes, I did. The Clayton Operations and Maintenance Facility is next, we're at 30% design here, we finalized that, many parcels involved, adjacent to each other, good progress in all, there's a couple of points, you know, of note with these two that we're still working on, but we really, we feel very good about the fact that this is moving along. As I've said before, it's a bricks and mortar representation of the fact that MARTA is not just passing through the area, MARTA is here to stay, it brings with it over 730 jobs, direct and indirect, and that ranges from operations to administrative to technology and leadership position, so it's a representation to the community that MARTA is here, that jobs are here, that we're really aiming for economic development in the area, for the area. About $220 million for this facility, and we're targeting August of 2026 for its operation. Just to say that it garnered a whole bunch of attention last week from folks in DC, Secretary Buttigieg and Reverend. Secretary Buttigieg and Reverend Warnock both with nice things to say about the level of support they're providing for us and their level of excitement that they have for Clayton County. Again, like I said, $33 million granted since 2019 and this really does serve to reduce some of that burden of the Clayton County Sales Tax as we move through to build these programs. Next up is the South Lake Riverdale Bus Rapid Transit at a cost of about $338 million. This is an expensive project. It is our first major discretionary grant pursuit since the late 1990s and it comes to Clayton first. The CIG will, if successful with the CIG application, we could get up to $150 million of that in grant money. So we're very excited about that. Again, that is expected to come in around December of 2026 and there's a lot of work to be done, but we're planning a public engagement session on March 29th at 6:30 PM at Riverdale Town Center and really that's where we get an opportunity to share with the community facts, FAQs about the BRT, the CIG Small Starts Program and things like that. This will be managed, this along with other projects, will be managed by another initiative that we have, which is the Clayton County Program Manager. So more on that in the future, but that program comes into play effective this summer and that position will be, you know, present and attending and identified Clayton County meetings. MARTA briefings will be provided. They'll coordinate between MARTA and Clayton and provide monthly status reporting on these important projects. And finally, I just wanted to talk about Five Point Station, the RACE Grant Application. I talk about this at all briefings because Five Point Station, I consider everybody's station. It is a direct, it has a direct rail link to airport station, so some has direct impact here on Clayton County. It's the heart of the system and we are going for a RACE Grant. It has to be submitted as early as April 14th and then we'll get a decision in November. So that's worth $25 million and really it works towards transforming the heart of our rail system. What you see above to the right is the existing condition with the, you know, the brutalist concrete canopy. And then what you see to the left is what we expect to convert that to under the surface. And then on the bottom, you'll see what the outside artist's concept, but what the outside is slated to look like. The visual cues will remain in terms of we're going for modern, light, clean, green and aesthetically appealing with a community-centric design. So that's what we, that's symbolic if you will of where this region is headed today and tomorrow when transit, when transit takes its next step. We start the rehab work this summer and we expect that the transformation at the above-street level will take place in or around 2028. So in closing, Chairman Turner, I just wanted to summarize by saying progress continues. We have funding in hand, we have scope and schedules intact and more work to be done, but we are engaged. And as I said, we will be back to you with the next update with budget details. And just before I close and hand it back, I just wanted to do a shameless plug. MARTA enjoys a good relationship with the community through our Riders Advisory Council and the applications for the next round of Rider Advisory Council closes on April 1st. To date, we haven't had applications from anyone in Clayton and we want to make sure that that happened. So I just wanted to spread the word that we're accepting. If people go to itsmart.com, then there's lots of opportunity to engage with that.
Yeah, if you have any information on that, that you can send us, we can send it out to our citizens. I would appreciate that as well.
Absolutely, will do.
And thank you for this presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you and thank you again for all that MARTA's doing.
Thank you.
For it to get in with you real soon.
My pleasure.
Appreciate you. All right, next up is the ARPA update and I guess Mr. Johnson's going to take care of that.
Okay, Commissioners. So again, I'm here to give you an update. Back on August 3rd, we presented to you the recommendations of an allocation for the funds that the county received. And if you recall, there's broad categories for those funds to be used. Public health response was typically thought to be the number one. Negative economic impact, many of these funds were targeted for areas where there was an anticipated negative economic impact. The third was to replace lost revenue, but again, that turned out to be an extremely complicated and maybe poorly thought out originally planned. As a result, that calculation is no longer required and we're able to allocate $10 million of those funds almost in a discretionary kind of a manner. Similar to, so that is what we're using for part of the public safety. I think if you recall, in January, I talked about $10 million that I'm going to use of this ARPA money to help spread over the next three years the cost of our public safety increases. So that is going to be one of the contributors there and we're going to benefit from that rule change quite a bit. Again, number four is broadband infrastructure. That was determined that as the economy was shut down in various areas, that we needed to see an improvement to that to all levels of the community. Number five, premium pay for essential workers and we have a plan in place and we've already allocated half of our funds in that area and paid that out to our public safety essential workers. And then again, number six, water and sewer infrastructure and we'll talk in that case as well. So the first area is public safety premium pay. We have, you know, we allocated about $12 million in that category to begin with. $8,000 total per employee, $4,000 in two separate payments. The first payment was in September of '21 and then the next payment is going to come in April of '22. And then if you recall in my presentation, of the ARPA money, we had about $8 million that was undesignated during the original discussion. That paired with the excess that I have in this category will come up with the $10 million. I'm taking the $10 million that's unallocated and adding this money from over here and combined, that's going to give us the $10 million of discretionary money to use for public safety. And right now, year-to-date, we've spent about $4.9 million for the public safety for the first round of payments and so we anticipate that to be pretty much the same for both groups of people, same people qualified for that pay. Court administration, again, you've seen in many requests starting to come to you is that the use of these funds by the courts starts to add and to bring on professionals to help alleviate the backlog in the courts, additional judges, additional clerks, resources to help alleviate that because funds were allocated over three years to all the courts, including the public defender's office. We've only spent about $413,000 to date, but you can anticipate that to start to go as we've added these positions and judges and different additional members in Solicitor's Office and some of the other areas. Magistrate Court, you'll start to see those expenditures move upward. Obviously, the Police Department, we allocated AED devices in the, for all the police carts as part of the health response to the public. And to date, we've spent $499,998 and we're going to find a home for that last $2 somewhere. Again, FIRE, EMS, EMA, they've been very much an integral part of what we've tried to do with the public response of the pandemic. Public Health Treatment Unit, again, that's something that's, you know, was ordered and hopefully we'll receive and that will allow us to provide additional resources to the community in terms of being able to treat, provide vaccination, testing as it's needed, you know, moving into the future. Additional med units as well as COVID test kits, if you recall. The county was able to get quite a bit of test kits when few people were able to. And you were able to make those available to the community at a very, very key time. Out of those funds, we've spent about $1,586,000 to date. And almost all those funds are kind of, you know, are committed and to be expended. We're waiting on some of this equipment to, for us to be received. Obviously, Southern Regional is a big part of the public health response and they came forward and we provided them two payments of $1,766 for hiring and retention plans. And then again, after a presentation, we received an additional $1.5 million. The board allocated an additional $1.5 million of those funds to the hospitals. So to date for this year, they received $3.266,250 and they'll receive another $1,766,250 when the second payment of money comes roughly May 10th, I think is when we anticipate it.
Maybe Chairman knows this. Do you know if any of that money was used for doctors and all, remember the COO?
Retention purposes.
And hiring others because she said that she had gone to the governor, the governor said no.
Well, she wanted, she asked for the guards, National Guard nurses and so forth, but the governor turned us down. Well, he just didn't allocate anything to us. But she, from what I've been told, she has been able to hire some additional doctors or nurses.
Yeah, we've received a list of people that received payments and new, and as part of our reporting, we're required to kind of provide that information to the Treasury about where we are. And so each quarter, they have to provide us a list of, you know, what, how they spent the money.
So are these positions, do you know, you know, are these temporary positions? And when the money runs out, the positions are gone or is this something that they'll keep ongoing?
These were recruits, many of them were recruitment bonuses. In other words, you have to, you know, you're given a large amount of money upfront comparable with what Piedmont, some of the other healthcare systems were paying. And then what would happen is they had an obligation to stay for a certain period of time based on the amount that they received. So the goal is to retain those individuals, bring them on and to see that program move forward and recruit new nurses in because they, obviously, as many hospitals have, the dynamics of the nursing profession have changed dramatically over the past less than two years. Next, with information technology, obviously, one of the biggest areas that not only is broadband accessibility to the entire community important, but also the other area, and I just was on a ACCG call this afternoon, cybersecurity. And there's quite a bit here about that as well because the more you use the facilities, the more vulnerable you become as you use social media, as you use more of those things, you become more vulnerable. So we haven't spent anything to date. We have a small amount initially allocated to Director Brookings and he is going to present to you in a work session, his plan for the funds here as we get them. Because we'll get the second amount of money and we can, we can spread those funds out, you know, we'll have it all. And so depending, we can make adjustments to how we've allocated the funding over the next couple of years. Obviously, economic development, you know, we have the first group of small, we allocated $5 million. We've spent zero to date. They have the funds available in their budget. And I know they're working to select vendors to help process candidates for that first million and a half that we have. It's so difficult with all the people to make sure that, we're learning it in some of the other areas that we've done with CARES money, that you get as much accurate information upfront to have people regularly working to collect an application that's complete and it's reviewed in order to be fair to somebody in terms of them able, being able to receive the funding.
Hold on. Uh, maybe this is, Ms. Erica. Is this money, money similar to what we had before for our small businesses or is it going to be dedicated to something else?
Uh, no, Commissioner, it's 1.5 set aside for small business grants specifically. And so yesterday, we just had the interview with the five firms and then Central Services will let us know who was the winning bidder. And so it's slated for the April 19th VOC meeting for you all to approve whoever that winning bid is and then the grant program will launch. And we're going to do it according to finance in three rounds because they wanted to allocate 1.5 for the first and not just give us the whole $5 million to distribute in grants. At the end, they're running in eight-week segments. So it'll be the first round, eight weeks, and then whenever we release the second, 1.5, it'll be an eight-week grant round. And then the final $2 million, I believe, is slated for 2023.
So how much of this money are they charging us to distribute it?
That part, I won't know until Central Services presents the contract. We're not privy to what they're charging us for it. They put in the RFP, it was a range of a percentage, I believe it was between 5 and 9% for grant distribution. So our evaluation team was only asked to rate them on, you know, how they responded to the scope, the organization of the team, the ability to do the work. And that part is kept out of our knowledge of how much they charge. It'll be presented though.
Is this a requirement from the feds for us to do it like that? Because it seemed to have worked the way we did it before.
I agree.
Is what a requirement? That we use a third-party administrator? No, it's not a requirement, but it is the trend now that there's been such a deluge of federal funding for communities to use. The grant programs are all-inclusive and it's hard to do anything else when you have one running. So at the outset, when we were first announced that we were getting the money, Development Authority, who we ran our first one through, let us know that they will not be able to, they don't have the manpower to produce or to administer another round. So we decided to do a third party and according to finance, we can pay them out of the ARPA funds. And even Director Bibbin said it's possible that they may be able to be paid out of the general fund just depending on where it lines up of what their administration fee is.
Did we get help before from the Chamber? They helped us before?
Yes, they have.
All three parties, I believe.
Yeah.
Who worked with them?
Yeah.
The Development Authority worked with them and the Chamber worked with the business side.
I'm just trying to keep as much money as possible for our businesses.
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely. But with this third party, we think it'll actually go smoother. It got convoluted a lot with all the calls going into the Development Authority and issuance of checks. We've got some great experienced respondents, especially what I've seen and in accordance to what Central Services has said in evaluating these vendors. So it ought to run fast and smooth. And we'll be coming with a full agenda item just to explain to you how the program is going to work with this round. And we hope at the time the first one is announced to be able to have those dates for that second round based on when the additional 1.5. Right now, we only have 1.5. Do we have a deadline as to when it has to be spent?
2026.
2026? Okay. Yeah.
Commissioner, we have it scheduled out to be completed by 2024. However, you know, we're going to receive our next payment. Today, they even discussed, you know, it should be pretty firm to receive it automatically on May 10th. So if we're started and we want to add money to it and we seem to be making progress, that, we could do that right away.
Oh, wonderful.
Is this, the vendor that's, would be selected, is that just for the first 1.5 or is for that for the entire $5 million?
Central Services suggested we write it into the RFP and they put it in there that it'll be a renewable contract three times so that if there's more money, it just protects us that with ease, we don't have to go back out with another RFP and solicit bids. We can just reload the pot and announce another round.
And you said it's, it's 5 to 9%?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at, was it $250,000 to $450,000?
And if this company, whoever wins the bid, I hope something will be written into that contract that if they do not perform the way we would like for them to perform and making it harder for our businesses because we ran into that last time.
We did and I'm so glad you said that Commissioner because with this RFP, we purposely had it in the language even in the question and answer period in January that was, we had with all those prospective bidders that the county would determine the application and the questions, they are there just to do the end. and the questions, they are there just to do the intake, approval, and distribution and, and give us reporting accurately on the business mix, who's applying, what district of the county they're coming from. So we feel like we have, we certainly did address that because we know our community and we wanted to make sure that those who are savvy and, and even not so savvy get the relief that they deserve with this money from our county as, you know, hope from the pandemic and beyond. So point well taken, and we have stressed that several times. So we're excited for that vendor to be selected and we will give them that application.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have something as well. I just want to concur. I said this when I first came on board. We have so many employees, we have the office of this, and there's always a new office of. And it concerns me that we're constantly having to go out to spend money, additional money, to get somebody to come in with the level of skill set that is needed to be able to administer a lot of this stuff that's coming before us. So I do concur, whether it's five percent or nine percent. Um, I just, I just think that there, there are other ways that we can get this done. I understand what trends are, but at the end of the day, um, we got some priorities in this county. And any money that's not going towards those priorities is money that, in my opinion, doesn't need to be spent. It doesn't mean that I, I want to make sure that the small businesses get the grants. In fact, I need to go through a book because I had some information for that. Uh, and they need these grants, um, but there's a better way definitely to do. And my concern too is by doing it with a vendor, kind of like Madam Vice Chair said, we're going to get the calls for the complaints when it's not processed correctly. You got a community development department. Somebody should have a grasp of these businesses in this community, not just the chamber. That we should not have to go outside to get this part done. If we don't know our community, how do we expect somebody else that we're going to pay more money to come in and know the businesses in our community? I have concern about that.
Yes, and thank you, Commissioner. The thought on doing the third party vendor was because we had so much money, we are still directing the process, though. There will be a link on the county website, then there will be a portal of which ease of process, there will be in-person intake opportunities for the vendor. And we've gone over that full schedule of how we want our businesses engaged so that everybody knows that there'll be a three-weekly time of announcing and advertising at this grant program, including a launch here at one of, before one of the meetings. And so, um, we hear you loud and clear, and definitely, that's our concern as well. It's simply from a processing administrative side because it had to run through a development authority. And they said they could not, would not do it. So this is where we are.
So maybe it's not a good idea that we separated our authority because we brought some of the talent in-house and some over there. So I just think we can look at things a little different. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Johnson, let's proceed on.
Also here, the Development Authority, there are some specific job training. Tomorrow, I believe, the Development Authority will approve the intergovernmental agreement between us and them. And as a result, we'll be able to provide funding for them to do the job training specifics that they identified to address those that have been impacted by the pandemic in terms of the jobs and, and area. So that's what they're.
Hold one sec. I see somebody out there from the Development Authority. Is anybody out here from the Development Authority? What am I not seeing because I don't have my glasses on?
Please, Commissioner, can we allow him to get ahead and do his presentation?
Yes, sir, but I've had a question is why I ask.
Is anybody from Development Authority out in the audience?
Okay, thank you. I do wear glasses, I'm so sorry.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, again, the, we provided funding to the Chamber of Commerce. They've implemented their program, and tonight, you'll hear some of the feedback about what they found with the program that they also implemented as well in terms of technical assistance to the small businesses. Um, the Water Authority, we, waiting on signing the agreement, but I think we're a couple of days away from that. And the debt relief for those affected by the pandemic to permanently remove some of the due, the amounts that are due of those individuals if they're not part of the rental assistance. And then also additional hardship assistance for them to help people that are having still a difficult time as a result of the pandemic. Um, Community Development, again, we talked about the three elements there. The CHODO, down payment assistance, and home, uh, emergency home repair. And to date, they've spent about twenty-four thousand dollars in the emergency home repair, and that activity is starting to get, to pick up and continue there as well. Clayton County Community Service Board, we provided funding for four different areas, hardship assistance, salary supplements. Again, in their area, they're seeing similar issues with employees and technical people that they use. Um, so there's some additional incentives and also to help them offset the additional costs of COVID expenses related to the pandemic, different supplies and things that they've, they've used up over the past year or so.
No, I thought they get money from the state. I thought that was a state authority. And we just supplement or whatever. The, the Community Service Board.
Yeah, we provide, Dr. Adams, yeah, we've provided additional.
Is this the one in Forest Park?
No, no. No, no. Okay, and so in this case, we're providing them additional to provide because the mental health portion of things has been a huge unlying, you know, hidden type of a, where the problems are coming forward there. So we provided additional assistance to them as well in additional in future years. Again, the medical examiner one, we have done nothing with that at this point because we didn't have the funding in the first year. Uh, but that is something that we'll continue to look at moving forward as we get additional, the remaining funds. The Senior Service Center, again, for the Alzheimer's service, the lack of funding there and the repairs that were necessary to address those folks very hit hard by the pandemic and not able to afford the repairs. So I think Buildings Maintenance, Director Hopkins has, has been working forward in making those improvements and spending the money to make the improvements that they requested. Um, other requests, again, additional sheriff medical assistance over the next three years. Uh, almost, we're seeing a large increase in their funds to provide services to inmates there as a result of the pandemic. EMS salaries, we've continued to charge some of our EMS salaries to the, to the grant in order to help us create some additional savings in the general fund. Nonprofit assistance, we have a million dollars allocated over the next two years for nonprofits. So we'll be taking a look at the applications that we get because they're just, I think they're due and, and we should be getting those in. And we'll be able to reach out to those that have been impacted by the pandemic and utilize those as well as maybe provide some additional assistance from the county portion to newer nonprofits to expand our nonprofit, profit activity. Obviously, we've had some additional staffing in terms of grants analyst within the Office of Performance Management. Also, in the Communications Department, we've spent some funding because of all the communication and all the various activities to support that area as well. We provided additional amounts of money, and they've spent nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-two to date to continue to communicate for all the various vaccine programs and all the activities that, that we have.
Go back to the Performance Management. What, what is that grant? And are these physicians?
Yeah, that was a, a grant-funded position to help us identify new grant opportunities. So they're constantly applying for new grants on behalf of the county to continue to, uh, allow us to get additional funds coming into the county. I think we discussed that at the retreat back on January fifteenth.
So I want to make sure I'm clear, so, because I'm really adding this all up. So we are spending money to go get an outside source to help conduct the issuance of grants for our small businesses. But we're also spending money for a grants analyst and a policy analyst.
That's correct.
And I believe during that retreat, it was determined that the information, it was even based in some of their, some of their, I guess, work on was out of date. So I'm a little bit confused on that, too. It's not that you can give me much information, but it's a note that I have to do a deeper dive.
And in that area, again, we've, you know, the, the purpose is they've been expediting, working with departments to get new grants. And that's really been one of the big weaknesses we've seen over the years. We've never had that position in the county where it's been somebody who understands grants, who's working, has an entire listing, and that individual is technically going to pay for themselves over time. Uh, so that's the, I think that's the objective there. And that's something I think many of you have raised in the past during about getting somebody to help us apply for grants and pay, and pay for themselves.
Um, that's important, but we also need people who understand the workings of government. And so that's my concern, that we have to have, they need to understand government. They know, need to know what transit-oriented development is. They need to know these various things and understand what each department is and does. So I think that we need to do a deeper dive as a board into that. How many grants have they found so far?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I know they're working with some additional.
How many grants, Mr. COO?
Currently, we've received, uh, well, we applied for with the Georgia ARPA funding. We requested over nine million dollars in it. We have still are waiting for Georgia to do a response in that. We went with IT, they actually declined the broadband, but we're still waiting for the other six categories to respond to. We put in for senior services, a request for senior services to support some of the programming as the ARPA funds we use for the building. So we put in a request for some sort of programming for that. Um, we've just recently received, uh, there was a grant that was due Monday, but it's been extended in terms of Senator Ossoff's office. So we reached out to three depart, couple of departments, and we are working with them to respond to that request for proposal as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How many staff members is that?
I have?
Yes.
I have three.
That's including you or?
It's four, including me.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, so just overall, to kind of give us a sense of where we are in the program. Again, the original allocation was sixty-six million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. We received the first thirty-three million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand. We spent a million, eight fifty-three, one fifty-nine in fiscal year twenty-one because the rules allowed us to go back and get reimbursed for some of those expenses. To date, we've spent thirteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty. And in total, it's about twenty-three percent of the total funds. Um, I think in the next couple of months, you'll start to see these programs escalate and to accelerate both within the public premium pay and some of the other areas. And as a result, we'll start to see in many of the areas in businesses and grants, you'll start to see some of the benefits there as well.
All right, any other questions?
Dennis, Ken, thank you for that information. Can we just get a copy of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, this may not be for Mr. Johnson, but, well, it's not really. It's for COO, and I think we discussed this. You were going to give us a report on where and how we are doing on that rental assistance and how many people we've served and that kind of.
Yes, ma'am. We'll bring that back for you the first work session in April to give you an overview of how the ARPA, the emergency rental assistance money has been spent as well.
Okay, and how much we have? Are we receiving any more or is this?
Yeah, we, we'll provide all, we'll give you similar to what Deputy CFO provided, kind of a breakdown of how much money has come in, how the money's been allocated, where it's being spent, and whether or not we're in, in the pipeline to get additional money. Okay?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your presentation. Let's move to Senate Bill forty-nine, building permits. Community direct, Development Director Patrick.
Mr. Chairman, Vice and Commissioners, good evening. This is real quick. Um, the Senate Bill F forty-nine has passed. It, um, it requires that third-party entities perform some of the functions we, we perform with relation to building permits.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it gives them the right to perform certain functions in the building permit process. And one of the reasons why I'm here is to say to you all that this will impact our building permit, our fees, if this actually takes hold. We only have one company that have exercised this, but they put a twist to it. They, they paid the permit fees and said to me in writing, not worry about it, that what they needed to do was to process fast because they have some companies that will work with them during the weekend. They had a very tight deadline since we're doing our week on weekends. So someone actually explained the, the bill to them. And when they came to me, uh, we've done some of the work and we said, okay, that we cannot set how that will work where they submit certain documents to us as the project continues. What you see as the table over there is an example using a building permit fee of, of seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and how the breakdown will be. The, um, blue text is what the applicant, if they choose this, can do. Um, they can apply, application intake, they can go online and apply. And we'll just jump through the blues. Plans review, they can perform their plans review, and they will also conduct their building inspections. So what we did was break down the process. As you can see there, application intake, application completeness check, plans review, permit issuance, building inspections, and certificate of occupancy. Those are the major steps of what we do in the building process. So by, even if they do, they apply online, we still have to do our application completeness check. And we apportioned six percent of the total fee to both intake and completeness check. A portioned twenty-five percent for plans review, which all the percentage, all the fees on the right correspond to the percentages based on that initial permit fee. So in permit, even if they do the plans review, we still have to go through the processing in our system to do certain things to it in order to issue it. They don't have access to our system, so we, we still got to do that part. Um, then that's six percent, then, that's twenty-five percent. Then the building inspections, if they choose to do that, that is thirty-eight percent. That number is directly from, it wasn't a guess. Our third-party inspectors right now, the contractor, will pay them thirty-eight percent to do what they do. So if this, if anybody wants to exercise this, that will be what they will do, thirty-eight percent of whatever they pay. Then in terms of issuing the certificate of occupancy, that fee will come to us. So in the bottom of the chart, you can see what the breakdown is. If this actually happens on a frequent basis, you will see where the county gets only thirty-one point one-three percent, and the third-party fees is sixty-eight point eight-seven percent. It is not a good bill, but it's, it passed. So that's where we, I just want to.
It's passed, so how?
Yeah, yeah, it's law. So it just, and so far, um, my.
Delegation fighting?
My guess is that this will only happen rarely because the process of building permit process is not as clean-cut as most think until you get in it. You have to obey certain things, you have to do certain things. So, but like I said, the only company that have approached me with it, they already paid and didn't mind the money they paid. And said, hey, they just want to go do inspections on weekends because they have assembled the team to do it. And we require, um, engineering letters when they do an inspection just to protect the county. And also, um, we are, we're, we're going to bring a draft language before this one fini, this process finishes, you started working with the law department to come up with a draft language that's going to go on the certificate of occupancy. Should this process be implemented, to make sure that certificate of occupancy has that language that protects the county for liability, knowing that we did not do all of it. for liability, knowing that we did not do all of it. So we're still working on that. The applicant that came is a very big project and so we'll get a little bit of time to work out that language. We used specifically on COs that went through this process. That's.
Is this bill effective July one or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr.?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we all have to be mindful of how this came about. It didn't come out out of the air and overnight. It came out because a lot of these builders were seeing that governments were really taking too long to get these things processed. So that's something we have to keep in mind, even though we feel that it's not a good bill and I get it, but it, it didn't happen overnight. We had lots of warnings of this. The second thing, though, is I just want to make sure that the board, that we understand, this is why we gotta get these impact fees in place, because we're losing revenue over and over and over again. So we need to make sure that we have an ability to be able to bring in additional funding, additional revenue. Because even though they're taking away some of the revenue, the bottom line is the cost to be able to support set businesses who are going through this process in these buildings, the cost and the burden still bears on the back of the current citizens. So thank you for bringing this to us, Mr. Ajiki, but it's one of the things we just gotta bear in mind, we gotta do better.
Yes, I, this bill has passed, it's not a good bill, period. And I think this is just part of a process. They have another bill, I believe it's out there, don't quote me, I think it's eleven forty-three or eleven oh-three, where they are going to remove control of us putting building standards in place. That's in the state. So now, they're gonna be allowed to, and we've gotta get control of this. They're gonna be allowed to say, look, Clayton County, we don't care what kind of building standards you have in place. We wanna do what we wanna have to, what we want to do from a state minimal. Then they come back and bring their own through Senate Bill forty-nine and bring their own folks in there to pass or permit them. And then we go back to, we have a sixty percent rental. Now you sell these complexes to these investor groups, these rights, and they drive our rental properties up. And we have citizens who constantly say, we want better restaurants, we want better this in Clayton County. To have a high level of rental properties like this stifles us from bringing those top-end type of industries and, and developments here. We're gonna have to figure out something with our legis, with our delegation, as well as with our code, to begin to get, to get a handle on this, on where they're trying to take us, which is straight to hell.
Any other questions for Mr. Ajiki?
I just think we need to be mindful, this ain't about rentals, this is about the building inspection, that's it. That's all. We just gotta get them impact fees to help you out for the loss.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ajiki.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, last up, Small Business and Entrepreneur Training Series. I'm assuming Chamber of Commerce President Williamson, how you doing, ma'am?
I'm great. I guess I'll bring up the caboose tonight.
Yes.
So I'll keep my presentation brief. I'm gonna take my mask off, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My glasses, glasses will fall.
I like you, good job.
Then I won't be able to see anything. First of all, I want to thank this board, thank you all so very much. I thank the county for the opportunity for the chamber to be the lead on the Small Business Training and Development Initiative. We got out of the gate early in two thousand and twenty-two, we did what we said we were going to do. We requested seventy-five thousand dollars and we spent just that training and developing small businesses across this county. I am pleased to announce that, yes, we have completed our eight weeks of training. However, we are about to launch a five-month series as phase two of our initiative in partnership with JP Morgan Chase. And that really puts small businesses in the room and at the table with the lenders. That's the next phase. So we've educated and informed our small businesses about the opportunities that are available. Now it's time for us, this is where the rubber meets the road, it's time for us to get those businesses in front of lenders and the other experts, such as the attorneys, the bankers, the CPAs, the marketing folks, the sales force, get them ready for sustainability. See, I've got a clicker here, so I'm gonna run right through. So we identified that small business growth and entrepreneurship are key areas of opportunity here in Clayton County. I do want to commend the Office of Economic Development and the Development Authority for the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which recommended that the chamber be the lead agency on small business development. Doesn't mean that we have all the answers, doesn't mean that we're gonna go out and do all the work. We're gonna partner with our Small Business Development Center, our Clayton County Library Center, as well as Central Services, even the Water Authority and the School District, as they have opportunities and resources to certify our business community to do work with them. The plan calls for the chamber to lead the charge on establishing a Small Business Task Force. We've done that. We have a Small Business Task Force that will meet regularly to talk about what each of our agencies are doing and how we're working to help our businesses grow in the community. I think where we got a little off-track in the past is we weren't cross-pollinating our resources. It's okay to have duplication of services in the community. I've heard a lot of people say, well, we are duplicating our services. Well, that's great. Guess what? We got six thousand businesses. It's okay to duplicate services. But when we duplicate the services, it needs to be kind of in a stepping stone kind of fashion. So for example, when the chamber led the charge on our eight-week program, yes, it was free. However, we needed to support our SBDC that had a Start Smart program that wasn't free. So if we got our businesses up to a point where they got the, they got the education and the information from us, they could then expand on that at the next level with the SBDC. That's how we get to support our agencies. And so that lack of collaboration, we're trying to address that now as a Small Business Development Task Force through that plan. So I do commend those agencies for what they've done in terms of leading the charge on the economic development strategy. I will say that from those recommendations that we made at the beginning of the ARPA process, we said that it would take us seventy-five thousand dollars to go out and do our eight-week training, and that's exactly what we've done. We linked up with the Entrepreneur Agency, which is a boutique firm that provides a bevy of services to small businesses. They do everything from training and development, which is how we use their, their firm, to also HR services that they can provide one-on-one access and mentorship to businesses. This is just a sampling of the eight weeks of training that we hosted, starting in January on the eleventh and ending on March first. We linked up with the Lake City Community Center. I thought that would be a strategic way for us to partner with one of our municipalities here in the county, plus it's strategically located and they just renovated their center. So it was a great opportunity for us to showcase an asset here in the county and help them to get the word out about future booking. So it was kind of twofold there. But we started our first session with how to establish business credit. That was really important for our small businesses, because many of them were paying from their pocket for purchases and expenses in their business. And that's not how you should be doing business. A lot of them, which we learned from our first and second round of the CARES Act grant funding, that they weren't even filing taxes, they didn't even have a business license. They were not, they were not doing business according to the way business should be done. They weren't registered with the Secretary of State. So instead of talking about what our small businesses weren't doing, we went out and tried to identify ways to get them up to speed, so they could go out and be able to establish business credit. I'm pleased to report that several of the small businesses who attended that session at the end of our eight weeks came back and said that they had established credit and they had opened credit with several of their vendors. So that's a great way to get them started. We then moved on to bookkeeping and tax prep and then from their information technology and then on to marketing and creating content. A lot of our small businesses, they don't have a marketing staff. They can't, they're doing the sales, the marketing, they're the secretary, they're the accountant, they're everything. And so we wanted to really streamline all those processes to make it easy for them. And so they loved going through our eight-week training. Not all of them came to every session, but if they came and picked and chose what worked for them and what they needed in their business, I know they were able to get something that they could take back and apply. Here's a breakdown of our attendees. So two hundred and twenty registrants over eight weeks. So we had over two hundred and twenty business that showed an interest. They, they saw our offerings and said, oh, we would love to participate. Okay, well, we know how that works. By the time the Monday rolled around for the sessions, we did not have that two twenty every week. We actually had a hundred and twelve who showed up over eight weeks, and then thirty businesses that actually came back multiple times. So that means that we had a hundred and twelve attendees overall, but thirty at least attended more than one session. Eighty percent of our participants were located in unincorporated Clayton County. So the other twenty percent were spread across our municipalities. I know I reached out to each of you at least once to say, hey, here's our offerings, please share this with your constituents. It is very important that we get them out and they know what's going on, so thank you for your assistance in disseminating the information. I did also work very closely with the City of Riverdale. They just established a new business alliance and they were meeting with their businesses regularly. So we had quite a few participants that came from there, City of Morrow, Lake City, as well as Jonesboro. Forty-five percent of our business participants had owned their business between two and five years. So that's the make or break period. And Commissioner Davis, I know you can speak to that, that's the make or break time. Those first three years are super critical, but especially when you get to year five, it's kind of your turning point. At thirty percent, thirty percent of participants have owned their business for over five years and they were still there trying to learn and grow in their business and try to move it to the next level. And then fifteen percent owned their business for less than two years. We got quite a few who showed up wanting to establish a new business. And I will be honest with you and let you know that some of the feedback that we got was, it's cumbersome to start a business in Clayton County. We don't know where to start.
The license.
The business license, I'm glad you mentioned that. That was a pain point for some of our small businesses, especially, and I think this is no slight to our business, our business license office, I've spoken with their director and she's quite savvy. However, what I will say is this, we have a lot of different types of businesses now. In fact, I met with a small business this morning who has a mobile learning unit. It's not a food truck. We've gotta figure out a way to classify her business and many others like it, that don't fall into one size fits all, one pocket. So we can't hold her business up, or else guess what? Cobb County's already knocking on her door, wanting to know how she can come and bring her mobile learning unit to Cobb County. So we don't wanna lose these businesses because we can't accommodate them at the very beginning stages of their startup. So I think that that is actually an easy fix. It's just an opportunity for the Chamber of Commerce, our Office of Economic Development, and our business license office, and whoever else wants to be a part of that conversation to sit down and talk about what our businesses need, because we're the agencies that are out there talking to businesses each and every day. And so overall, our attendees enjoyed the session, they had a great time and they learned some things. The biggest takeaway that I saw over the eight weeks was the relationship building, the opportunity to share ideas amongst other business owners in the community. That's invaluable. Yes, you get information that you can apply, that's great, but establishing relationships is kind of an intangible and it's invaluable, an invaluable benefit. So I want to share with you a quick video, it's already started. It's just an overview of what we did over the eight weeks.
Hey guys, my name is Diamond. This was my first time ever attending the Entrepreneur Workshop and Business Establishment Credit, and it was so informative. I had such a great time, I took a lot of notes. She was very informative on this class.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Tewell, owner of Fashion 3F Inc. I took the Entrepreneur Academy class for eight weeks. I learned a lot about credit, credit building, and establishing my business. I had a really great time with you guys, thank you guys, you're the best. The Entrepreneur Training Academy for minute growing businesses, I would highly recommend it. I've been in business for several, several years. However, businesses, the face of businesses have changed and the Entrepreneur Training Course, I would highly recommend it to get you back on track and keep you ahead of the game. Thank you, entrepreneurs.
Hi, I'm Christine, I just attended Entrepreneur Assault and Agency Seminar. Focused on marketing today, it was an outstanding event. I learned so much about it. I'm so thankful to be in this class, to have this education, to grow my business.
For instance, I took this small business seminar training class in Clayton County Chamber of Commerce, and it was such great information and.
It was like, it was free. It was free, free!
So it was great information that you can use and that I can apply to my business. Matter of fact, some of the stuff we learned are already applying to my business. So the next time we offer this course, you guys gotta come and be a part.
So that's our program, we're super excited about it. My recommendation would be for us to host this twice a year. As I mentioned, we just wrapped up our session in March and we're going into a five-month partnership with JP Morgan Chase, which will take us through August, we'll begin that in April. And then in the fall, my hope would be to relaunch our eight-week series. One thing that I think that we really need to play, pay close attention to, as I mentioned, is the other agencies in our community who are also hosting trainings, so that our, our business community can benefit from just about everybody and pick and choose. I don't wanna run trainings that are competing with other agencies. We're here to complement and support what they're doing. So if our SBDC is running their Start Smart or their next level-up training, then we need to adjust and host ours when theirs is done, so that that way we're not competing with what they're doing. That would be my recommendation. Thank you so very much for the support you gave us. It was our honor and pleasure to be able to serve our business community. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Garber. You're doing, you're doing a tremendous job and we really appreciate what you're doing for those who have businesses and those who aspire to build a business here in Clayton County. Programs that you are initiating are invaluable. So we really appreciate what you're doing in that, in that vein and in that spirit as well. Are there any questions for Ms. Williamson?
Yes. First, Ms. Williamson, thank you. And I didn't realize you were fam, you, so, but, somebody in the back. But at any rate, I think this is great and I think you all have done an awesome job. But I also would like to see in the next steps, if we could find a way to find those of the developing businesses in areas that we need that type of business in Clayton County. For instance, we, we put in our documents that we got a lot of beauty salons, we got a lot of hair salons, we got a lot of barber shops. But as has been stated, the community is looking to get more in other areas. You know, how do we get folks that are coming in that are doing that startup tech company? Or that startup even idea for something of an app on a phone? How do we begin to market towards those folks that we need to begin to fill that space that we're lacking in the community? It's kind of a question we just have to kind of keep in mind as we go to the next level. And then the other thing, Dennis, I don't know if you can answer this, but we have money set aside through SPOLOST for a incubator. Okay, so if we're talking about building out, is there an opportunity that we can have those discussions, that we can build strategically upon what's happening, not just with the chamber, but with UGA that's been doing this for a while, or Clayton State University, which I know you work with? How do we begin to funnel some of that funding into this space?
Well, again, SPOLOST is for the capital, so the construction of that facility has been, I believe, contracted and we're on our way to, to build that facility. So obviously, that's step one. Step two, you know, we have some opportunities maybe for some hotel motel taxes that could be applied.
Okay.
Some other areas that we could see what they need in terms of being a partner. We could, we could issue them a, a grant if we chose to, at this point, to, to allow them to service other. them to service, um, other entities.
Through that funding?
Yeah. So the other thing, even ARPA, again, is, might be available a year down the road where we can prune a program and make do for this to then strategically fall in place in the right time with the right content to continue to bring this program forward.
Okay. Cause, and the reason I say that is the biggest thing is we have many opportunities before us, but it's what bucket of money do we move to move to use in a certain way that's going to give us the best bang for our buck, the most benefit. And so I do want to, I am going to get with you all for next week, because I know that there's also a space even for those that are artistically inclined. We got a lot of students that have graduated from Stillwell School of the Arts or from even some of these other schools, they go someplace else because we're not investing in them. So this is great, but I really want to see us dig in deep in the space that we've not been, uh, massaging like we should within, uh, our county to give us a great benefit.
I do have a question.
Is there any kind of tracking mechanism that we're doing as far as these businesses, as far as their SIC and any ICS codes?
Uh, yeah, you know, what we did was, and you know what, I did not include that as a category in their signup. So on the front end of every session, they signed in, so I know exactly where they all came from. And then I tracked everything via Eventbrite and then Survey Monkey. That's how I did all of our evaluations, just so that we could keep track and actually record feedback from the program as well as capture what city or municipality or what part of the county they were coming from. And in terms of the next codes, no, I did not capture that, but we'll jot it.
Well, yeah, well, most of them aren't going to know anyway, if you're starting a new business. And I think that's one piece in how do we begin to capture it, how do we begin to track it, but also how do we evolve the program? I, I know a lot of these folks that start new businesses, it's the basics.
Yeah.
They say they can't get loans and they say they can't get this and, and this, uh, exercise is hard, but many times that's because we're not taking care of the basics in starting a business. Um, I know that's what I went through and you have, it's, you have to learn, you learn by failure and hopefully you can continue to learn and grow your business so that you can stay in business. And that's my thing is, how do we begin to get them started, implement them in their infancy stage in business, but then grow their business on?
Absolutely.
I have a question. Um, I wanted to ask you if we could also track, um, the businesses that have been, that are successful, like bring them back to present and talk about, you know, how much money they've made, what they've done, and the process of them getting there. So I'd like to, again, inspect what we expect and what we taught them and, um, also who's evaluating and, well, not just evaluating, who's teaching the classes and things of that nature? We, you know, we want to know about that as well.
Yeah, so twofold. Um, so the firm that we hired to do this, as I mentioned, it's a boutique of services and I believe, and this, this is accurate, she, what she did was, any business who signed up for the full eight weeks got a business valuation. Now, her business, obviously, is to assist small businesses with their, what they're doing and their growth internally. And so she gave them a free business valuation and she keeps track of them over a period of time. So it wouldn't be hard to capture that small segment. It's not going to be the four-hundred-and-twelve people that attended, but it will be those ones who participated in the full eight-week series, because remember, that means they would have started at the beginning session and gone all the way through the end, graduated, and we would then be able to track, are they keeping up with what they learned and how they're applying it? And then, um, in terms of who taught those sessions, so Azure Green was the facilitator, it's her company, and then she then hired four subcontractors who came in and taught various sessions. So she did a few on her own and then four additional, we had five facilitators.
So where, where was all this done at?
It was all done at Lake City.
Lake City, okay.
Another thing, um, I'm glad you brought up about the business license. I don't think people are aware, but not only with the lab, because that young lady lives in District Three, and I know she went to operations, but she got sent back to the district, but at the end of the day, that has to be, that has to go through community development. But even with the businesses nowadays, they don't need a whole space. So what they're doing is they're occupying space that they have shared space. Seventeen years ago, when I first started my business, I had it in downtown Jonesboro, got a business license like that. Well, right now I got a business owner who basically just relocated, still in Clayton, relocated, and we don't even know what to do with them. So that has to be changed. I think that they're bringing something before this board, but we're missing out on revenue there, as you mentioned. So, um, I have been having conversations with Chief Murkison as well as with Mr. Ajiki, so if you could get involved, I'll put you on the email thread too, to make sure they're not missing anything when they bring that before the board, I think in the next couple of months for those policy changes.
Well, and I'll need to be here for that too, just to educate myself in my office, I want to make sure that we're sharing the right information and that what we're sharing is consistent with what, uh, the business license office is sharing, because they're the experts. They're doing it every day, whether right or wrong. They're the ones who can, are communicating with our business community. And so if I'm telling our business community something that differs from what they're telling them, see, we're all family internally here. And it appears then that we don't have our ducks in a row and that the ball is being dropped somewhere. So I would rather be in the loop. You know, even if our policies aren't necessarily as flexible as I'd like to see, it's still our policy and we will obviously abide by it, but we want to at least be on the same page with them.
Let's make that happen.
Thank you for bringing that up as well. I know, we're talking about the same business owner, but yes, absolutely. But there were several others who did have that feedback.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation. And before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge our martyr representative, Miss Abdullah, uh, Roberta Abdullah Slom, thank you for showing.
And...
Go ahead.
Before we leave, there are two things with, um, I asked for, um, a curse before. I'll go with, uh, this one first. Uh, we lost a giant in our community, Ms. LaShawn Pace. I don't know if people realize that she was a Clayton County citizen. Taught her daughter over at Suter Elementary School. And, um, now the great LaShawn Pace Singers, there are two of them that are gone on, I know for certain. And so we definitely honor her and her legacy and pray for her family. Um, and then the other thing we neglected to do in the last board meeting is congratulate our state champions. And there was a runner-up, there was somebody else that, um, another team that were like runner-ups, Forest Park, Lovejoy High School once again, twenty-eighteen, and then now twenty-twenty-two, our state champions right here in Clayton County, the girls, girls' basketball team, Women's History Month, making history in Clayton County.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.